You want to look over there?
It's up to you.
Where is your phone?
It's up to you.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
Good evening. Sorry for the delay. We just had one member that was missing and we had to wait so we could get a forum. And now we have the forum, so... The order of the meeting tonight is approval of the minutes and decision and content review and vote on Bontos' Rowley Auto Parts decision. And adjournment after that. And all the minutes of Dwight Linkwood.
Lisa doesn't dance, Josh, but she'll pull the numbers out.
She does.
So the only motion for acceptance of minutes is, or you still want to?
You want to look through them more? Want some more time?
Well, I got a couple of things I saw, because I actually did read them before tonight.
Oh, good.
On page three, I'm sorry, page four. I'd love to take credit about halfway down, it says perhaps the decisions that say road where he registered, not junked. For whatever it's worth, that wasn't me, that was Tom.
Okay.
I mean, I recognize it and it was a good point, but I didn't say it.
Okay.
Who said it? You think I said it?
Yeah.
Oh. Well, Peter gave me some verbiage which I used, you'll see in the decision, which...
And the other thing on page three, again, this is a comment I made, that's why I was able to pick it up. The concern about the huge difference between the cars, between Heidgird's visits 300 and Fire Chief's 276.
Yep.
That isn't really, those numbers aren't accurate. The difference was like almost twice as much. And that the chief estimated it was as more, as was referenced in a later page, let's see which page was it. I mean, the chief thought...
The chief thought ultimately that about 250 would be suitable.
250 would be suitable.
Would actually be the maximum, was what he wrote in his letter.
Yeah.
And my number was 350 plus, and that's where the discrepancy existed. In the interim, though, we did meet with the chief there and discuss the matter further and clarify it.
Right, so that, I don't think that really matters too much. You know, I think for the minutes, we could leave that as is.
Okay.
And the rest of it, I think was okay. And if you want to give me credit for that other statement, go ahead.
Yeah, for future reference, I would be happy to give you credit.
But it wasn't me, believe me.
Anything that is not necessarily credit to me is fine.
Okay, do you move to accept them?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move that we accept the minutes from the August 20th meeting.
As amended?
As prepared.
Most of them made second in favor?
Aye. What's I said?
Now we get to the decision. Then Tom has agreed.
Okay.
Okay, before we go, before doing the decision, I want to record that we agreed that Tom and I would meet with the Fire Chief and Mr. Bontos at the site sometime before the meeting, and which we did last Monday. And we found out that basically, a number of cars was the issue, main issue. And that the police chief was going by the hand sketch.
Police or fire?
Police.
Fire.
Fire, fire.
Did I say police?
No.
Fire chief.
Fire.
The number of cars, from what he saw and going by Mr. Bontos' sketch, that was how he came up with the figure of 276 or 275, whichever figure was. We discussed it and we decided that the police chief agreed that the number of cars was not an issue. Is that correct?
That's correct. He explained that he used a template, a hand-drawn template by Mr. Bontos, to simply come up with a rough calculation of what would be suitable as opposed to actually a clearly scale-driven model of what the space would hold. So based upon what he observed, without doing a hard count, and a template that was provided originally to all of us regarding this and that was further provided, he came up with that number that was far more conservative in fact than our number was. And when we were there, we did again a head count essentially of the cars that were there. And there were again close to 300 cars in the predominantly rear section of the property. And the whole front section of the dog leg or arm of the L had almost no cars in it at this point in time, there were a 10-part car. You could easily have put on a similar parking structure, which is to say, the way they were parked, well, you remember, there were dual rows back in so they could remove them. And the Fire Chief wanted 25 feet between rows for access of emergency.
His main concern was that cars not be parked along fence.
Right.
Fence in the area.
Yeah, access for safety vehicles.
Right.
Access to safety vehicles.
And they were...
So that the cars be parked in rows with a rowway between them so that the fire trucks could get down through. And kind of agreed that about 25 feet would be sufficient. So saying that, Tom has drafted a decision. And I'm going to ask Tom to relook into the record. And if there's any questions, now's the time to make any comments when we get to it.
Okay.
After we get through.
Great.
Okay. All right, I will read the decision in its entirety, even though essentially page one merely has, has no specific case material, but merely outlines the elements of the application who's working on the case. So I'll read through that fairly quickly. I will try to read it all quickly. And, but from pages two to the, through six is where the thrust of the case is. This decision, prospective decision of the Rowley Zoning Board of Appeals under the protective zoning by law upon petition of Michael Bontos in an application dated 3/24/2015, asking to appeal a letter from the Rowley Building Inspector dated 2/24/15 citing a formal complaint requesting zoning enforcement of a prior board decision on the applicant's property located at 164 Boxford Road and to apply for a special permit on said property to allow the presence of a vehicle storage business. A hearing was held at the Rowley Town Hall Annex Center School on April 16, 2015. Members acting on this case are Donald W. Thurston, Chairman; Thomas W. Heidgird, Clerk; Robert H. Cool, Associate Member; David Elavek, Member; and Philip A. Cressy, Member. Pursuant to a public notice originally in the town common, a newspaper in general circulation, the town of Rowley, published on the 1st of April 2015 and on the 8th of April 2015, and by mail-sent postage prepaid to all parties in interest as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, and as such list of parties was certified by the town assessors in accordance therewith, and to the town clerk, the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, and the building inspector, and by being posted in conspicuous place in the Rowley Town Hall for not less than 14 days. The land is located in the outlying district and is shown on Assessor's Map 2, lots nine and 10. The deed is recorded in the ESAC Registry of Deeds, Book 6106, page 110. The applicant is requesting a special permit under Section 5.2.1 of the Rowley zoning bylaws, which states, quote, "Except as provided under Section 5.2.2, the Board of Appeals may issue a special permit authorizing expansion of a nonconforming use or a change of a nonconforming use to another nonconforming use, but only if the Board determines that such expansion or change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use. Changes that constitute an expansion of a nonconforming use include, but are not limited to, an increase in building lot coverage or floor area, parking or loading capacity, or the hours of operation of such use." The request for the special permit emanates from and seeks release of a letter dated February 24, 2015, see attached, from the Rowley Building Inspector, in which he issued a cease-and-desist order for a vehicle storage business which the applicant operates at the location and which the building inspector's letter indicates, among other stipulated factors, was not operating for a period of two years or more and therefore lost its grandfathered status. The chairman opened the public hearing in due form and determined there was no conflict of interest by him or any other member acting on this case. Preliminary case material. At the public hearing on the 16th at approximately 7:30 PM, the chairman read the application into the public record. The board also received and accepted a certified abutter's list. As a matter of record, the property previously had a board decision, 87.2, see attached, filed that granted a special permit subject to key conditions for, among other things, auto storage, service, and repair. However, as specified in that decision and as part of a condition imposed therein, 87.2, page 5, item L, the 87.2 decision effectively ceased to apply with the termination of the lessor-lese relationship between the applicant's company and the third party which spanned the period between 1987 and 2007, and then ended. This condition nullified the presence of any of the other conditions imposed by that decision, and therefore the property effectively reverted to the pre-87.2 decision zoning status as a licensed auto parts business in the town of Rowley since 1979 which included or auto storage capabilities. There were numerous abutters present, including the original complainant to the building inspector, John Beard of Boxford Road. His and their concerns included street safety due to increased vehicle traffic, vehicle speed, hours of operation, and potential impacts to groundwater supplies as a result of spills or fluid losses from any vehicles now understood to be stored on the property. Planning Board Chair Curtis Bryant, though not an abutter, asked to make specific note of Rowley Bylaw 521, 522, and Mass. General Laws 310, CMR 22.21, paragraph 1F, to illustrate to the board that there is a real question as to whether the applicant should be allowed to expand or change a nonconforming use if it had technically lost its grandfathered status, and further, that the type of business he sought a special permit for in fact was disallowed in the said location for which he intended to operate the business. The applicant, Michael Bontos, owner of Rowley Auto Parts, and his attorney, speaking on his behalf, Attorney Peter Ross, were present at the hearing. Attorney Ross explained to the board that because Mr. Bontos' auto business never suspended operations, that he was, one, asking to appeal the building inspector's cease-and-desist order, and, two, then obtained the proper special permit to cover his business as it now functions if necessary. Mr. Ross submitted a plot plan and a site plan of the property with the application. Attorney Ross also presented the board with copies of licenses issued by the Board of Selectmen from 2007 to the present, as well as receipts showing transacted sales during the same period. He stated further that the current use in fact involved the storage of new vehicles owned by auto dealerships in the area who were leasing the space from Mr. Bontos pending future sales. He also said that cars are no longer being stripped, dismantled, and sold in parts as had been the case in prior years during the inception of Mr. Bontos' company in 1979. The board concluded that this case involves several issues for further study and that a site visit would be appropriate to determine a clearer and current perspective on the level of auto storage implied by Mr. Ross. The hearing was continued to June 18, 2015, and subject to a site visit at a time to be determined later. Page three. At the continued public hearing on June 18 at approximately 7:15 PM, the chairman opened the case and read into the record letters concerning the application the board received from the Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Fire Department, Planning Board, and the Board of Selectmen. Each pointed out issues which it believed had relevance to the application, and the board elected to deal with those that became pertinent as the case moved forward. The crux of this case was initiated by the letter previously referenced from the building inspector to the applicant, in which the building inspector questioned the principal legal business use of the property since it appeared that there had been no business use for a period of more than two years, the technical definition of abandonment in the Rowley zoning bylaw, at a time period after which a business cannot be reestablished. He therefore issued a cease-and-desist order to the applicant indicating he could appeal such finding by petitioning the ZBA for an opinion or reversal of his finding and/or to obtain a special permit for said use. Attorney Ross provided the board with information it requested to verify the existence of the company in the form of tax returns which showed a New Hampshire address for the company. Yet all the BOs licenses were to Rowley Auto Parts doing business as name at the Boxford address. Attorney Ross stated that in conjunction with the tax returns and receipts, the licenses clearly indicated that business was done in Rowley from 2007 to the present, so there was no abandonment issue. However, the chairman noted that while there is evidence that there was some work being done on the site relevant to the purported grandfather use, the board appeared to be being asked to expand a current nonconforming use, and further that its location in a water protection district would prohibit the board from approving a permit under those conditions as it would be a violation of Mass. General Laws 310 governing wellhead protection. In an effort to verify the representations by Attorney Ross regarding the site layout, the board conducted a site visit on Monday, May 4, 2015, at 1:00 PM, and confirmed the presence of perhaps 200 cars, essentially all new and parked neatly in rows. It was clear that this amount of vehicles was far less than the site could support. Perimeter boundaries were noted and access and exit locations viewed, as well as specific proximity to wetland and related vegetation. The board continued to debate and discuss the issues surrounding abandonment and whether or not it was faced with a discontinued nonconforming use, or as Attorney Ross was proposing, that the use as defined was vehicle storage and that it in fact was a valid subset of the original grandfather use. The board felt it needed further time to review material presented by Attorney Ross to further investigate the status of the presence of the nonconforming use and to assess if the proposed use was in fact an expansion of the nonconforming use. Based on these factors, the board decided to continue the hearing to August 20, 2015, to which the applicant agreed before considering a final vote on the application. At the continued public hearing on August 20, 2015, at approximately 7:15 PM, Attorney Ross presented the board with a list of abutters who had been approached by the applicant and signed the letter indicating their approval of the applicant's business, which were later verified. The board also received a follow-up letter from the Fire Department dated August 4, 2015, in which it stated that it had met the applicant and had resolved all of its concerns regarding spill containment and access to and egress from the site. Page four. Regarding the abandonment and expansion issues at the center of this application, the board reviewed a memo dated 10/30/86 from Attorney James Cresser, see attached, on behalf of the original client noted in the applicant's special permit case number 87-2. That memo presented clear case law which stayed in effect that a use at whatever condition of existence of said use was still the same use, and a change in the same use expansion was not an expansion of the use per se. With this clarification, the board was able to conclude that even though the precise relationship Rowley Auto Parts was granted in 87.2 decision relating to its lesser-lese status with Underwriter Salvage Company had lapsed, its prior grandfathered use of vehicle storage was still intact, as it had always had the right to store vehicles on the site. Further, the result of prior submitted evidence, the board determined that since Rowley Auto Parts operated on the site during the period since the last termination of that prior decision, despite a substantially diminished business capacity, it nevertheless could not be considered as abandoned, and therefore the prior use or uses continued to the present. The only aspect of the termination of the 87.2 special permit was, that was material, is that all the conditions stated therein also ceased to be present as they only related to the operation of the special permit while the relationship with Underwriter Salvage Company was in full force and effect. In continuing its review of case material, the board examined several subjects alerted to it by the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. The Planning Board was concerned that the right to sell cars was being considered, which it was not. Secondly, there was a concern that no new use in a water protection district associated with new development activity could be granted under state law. However, the definition of new development activity related purely to the creation of new structures, also not a relevant component of this special permit request. Lastly, there was a concern that the special permit might authorize the existence of a junk storage yard or prohibited use in terms of the town master plan. While the town master plan is an excellent document collection of guidelines and parameters consuming future development patterns for the town, as it was never formally adopted by town meeting, it does not regulate or otherwise confine the town or its boards to operating under its recommendations. Since the proposed use does not call for or request the ability to store junk or inoperable vehicles, the board found this concern did not apply. Issues which have been highlighted by the Conservation Commission concern care of the site in the event of hazardous waste spillage and are being addressed in the conditions of this decision. In effect, the applicant is requesting the ability to continue an existing use, vehicle storage, originally granted as part of its original pre-87.2 decision licensing by the town and therefore a nonconforming grandfathered use, and is asking that said use be confined to the leasing of space to mass licensed resellers of new and used registerable automobiles who desire to store unsold cars on the site. Since the board's site visit confirmed the presence of virtually all new cars, at least 90% of those viewed, the board believes that the proposed use is in fact less detrimental to the site than previous uses formally allowed. The Fire Department also made a recommendation that the site be restricted to no more than 250 vehicles at any one time. Board member Heidgird had visited the site on the date of this hearing and found that there were as many as 350 vehicles and that there was ample space for at least 150 more based on his own calculations. Given the differential in number, the board sought clarification on the assumptions the Fire Department used in their calculations, and requested a meeting with Chief Broderick at the site, it concluded that the decision would incorporate a final resolution concerning vehicle levels if necessary. Page five. With reference to the original complaint, the board noted that it did not have nor was presented with any hard evidence that there were vehicles speeding in the area associated with this business, that there were negative impacts on the neighborhood as a result of the presence of the business, or that there had been any impact to date on any wetlands. In the case of any speeding, the applicant agreed to place signage inside the property showing the 25 mile per hour limit outside of the property. The board, after requesting any other hearing testimony from either abutters or interested parties and hearing none, and after completing a review of all of the pertinent data was completed, determined that there was sufficient grounds to, one, uphold the request for an appeal of the building inspector's letter of 2/24/15 removing the cease-and-desist order, and, two, grant a special permit allowing the presence of a vehicle storage business under Section 5.2, and authorized the ZBA clerk by unanimous vote to draft a decision of approval to be reviewed and signed during the September 17 monthly meeting. Board findings. The board, after concluding the thorough review of the application filed as an action of an appeal of a building inspector's cease-and-desist order in a letter dated February 24, 2015, and further, to request a special permit to authorize the continuance of an existing nonconforming business doing business as Rowley Auto Parts to operate a vehicle storage business with special consideration given to the use and nature of the property, and considering the applicant owner's desire to remain in full compliance with any relevant town codes or bylaws, does hereby find there to be sufficient grounds to grant said appeal and special permit, and finds the application for the permit to create a condition that is, quote, "not any more detrimental to the neighborhood," and therefore agreed to issue a special permit as requested at the site noted on site plans provided as part of the original application and shown in the attached plot plan dated July 17, 2008, and prepared by Apple Associates, Inc., Byfield, Mass. Therefore, the board votes to approve a special permit as requested under Section 5.2 to be granted, subject to the following conditions. One, the owner will not store or allow to be stored any vehicles which are not verifiably registerable, have junk or salvage titles, or are otherwise be inoperable. Two, the vehicles stored can only be moved on and off the property during normal business hours, seven days a week, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Three, the nine-acre site is depicted in the attached site plan shall be fenced and include a lock gate and will be the only area in which cars can be stored. There will be no employees working on vehicles on the site in connection with repairs to or alterations of stored vehicles. Four, existing trees and vegetation constituting a visual barrier will be left intact. Five, the Fire Department will be provided with keys to any locks used to secure the property gate, or in the future event of a knocked security box, with access to it in a manner prescribed by the Fire Chief. Six, at a maximum, cars can be parked in double rows with at least a 25-foot separation between each set of double rows in order to allow access for emergency vehicles with total vehicle density determined by allowable conditions under this guideline. Seven, there will be no signage on Boxford Road other than on the property gate advertising this or any other business, and such signs will conform to standard Rowley signed bylaws. Eight, Mr. Bontos, doing business as Rowley Auto Parts, will not be engaged in auto sales or auto repair business or any other business other than one which enables vehicles to be stored on the property for any other purpose than resale. Nine, the applicant will maintain at least two spill containment systems on-site at all times as outlined by the Fire Department in its letter to the ZBA of 8/4/2015. These will include absorbent pads, speedy dry, and booms, a written policy noting the Fire Department's phone number, as well as directions for use in the event of need. Ten, the applicant shall employ a regular mowing program to enable easy and regular access to all parts of the fenced area where parking may occur, and to include cutting along the fence line to diminish the chances of fire either in or from outside the yard. Eleven, the applicant will comply with any groundwater regulations which may apply as defined by the Rowley Conservation Commission. Twelve, the special permit granted herein is not assignable. Thirteen, the board requires the applicant files a copy of said decision with the registry of deeds and provides a receipt from the registry confirming such no later than 30 days from the end of the appeal period. Failure to do so will result in a request from the ZBA to the building inspector to issue a cease-and-desist order until such time. to the building inspector to issue a cease and desist order until such time that the ZBA board receives the registry receipt requested. 14. The applicant understands he is not entitled to any expansion or change of any provision of this decision without the prior written approval from the zoning board of appeals in the form of an amendment to this decision and any such action or actions will be considered a violation which will result in the issuance of a cease and desist order by the building Voted this 17th day of September, 2015. A lot of information in there.
Could I make a request?
As long as I don't have to rewrite it.
No, you've done a lot of good work and I don't want to minimize that.
Well, we're open to comments, so...
The board's finding in paragraph 1...
What page?
Page 5. My client does have an existing, although very small, business on Rowley Auto Parts. And I'm assuming that if one puts that out of business, I'm assuming you mean we're not leasing space to store junk cars or non-registerable cars, but that you're on occasion bringing some parts in and selling, which you've been doing all along. I don't know if I've got that right.
Peter Rith, speak specifically to the point you're talking about I mentioned.
Okay. The owner will not store or allow to be stored any vehicles which are not verifiably registrable, have junk or salvage titles, or otherwise be inoperable.
Yeah.
That's inconsistent with some of the things he's been doing lately. He's been bringing junk cars on, I think there were, when we were there on Monday...
But I sold used auto parts. They sold the parts inside my building.
The way this is written, as I read it, and I'm open to review on this, is that this comment only refers to a whole vehicle. So what the board is concerned about is that we don't end up with any sort of a junkyard status. Now, when we were there on our second visit, not our most recent visit, I did see some vehicles that I believe were inoperable.
There's two vehicles.
I think one was a trailer, maybe?
A camper.
A camper. Okay. I'm not sure I consider that a vehicle under the conditions that we're looking at vehicles, number one. Number two, when we inspected the building, all we saw was fewer parts than you and I could fit in our garage. You know, this is meant, we don't anticipate that you're going to be pulling in a junk vehicle, stripping it, and letting it sit there and taking the few resalable parts, which you would want to protect, and put them inside. If you're going to do that, you've got to do it somewhere else. Because we really, we just, you know, or do it inside.
Inside the building.
Inside the building.
Oh, that's fine.
If you put it inside the building, it can't, I just don't want five junk cars that are leaking because they're inoperable, not functioning vehicles. That's what we're trying to get away from.
I think we agree. I just don't want to run into a problem saying five years from now, and we just try to figure out what this means. Are you...
In other words, you want the car, if I bring a car in here, I mean, I have parts in it that I sell, that I have, so I can swap me some of my parts, customers like that. If I want to bring a car at one time, I put it in my building, I take whatever parts I want and keep it inside the building.
If you're doing it inside the building, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, you know, I don't think there's an issue with that.
I have a question. Okay. You'll bring in a car that has been in an accident and you strip it. What do you do with the vehicle when you're through stripping?
It goes to the yard. I don't keep it outside.
You had, we were up there before, you had a great big dumpster up there full of, what, junk cars?
A dumpster?
Right.
No, I was just cleaning up the yard. That's all I was doing. Matter of fact, for instance, that camper, okay? When you sell it for scrap metal, they don't buy wood. So I was taking the wood off the thing and they move them on the side. That's the metal they sell. And I put the stuff in the dumpster. That was after that. There was no hazardous waste in there or anything like that.
Okay. No, I was just, I was just wondering, there are certain parts that you can take off the car that you can resell.
Yes.
Okay? But there are other parts that you can't resell.
Exactly. The car will be, once I get rid of, once I do that, then I'll get rid of the car.
Okay. You don't keep the car on site?
No. I still got to finish that. Can't put it in like that. Because I bring a car in here, because that's what I need a class three license for, that I have since 1974, to do that. So whatever used parts I have inside the building, I want to be able to sell those buildings, whatever I store inside the building.
Right.
The cars won't, I love, on the hot topic, that's, I've got to describe the cars. I just want to be able to keep my class three license.
Well, yeah, your other licenses in full force and effect, we're not impacting that.
That's all I just wanted to make sure about.
Yeah. Well, the only thing, the only thing I could see, you know, is that the owner will not, we amend this wording to say the owner will not allow, will not store or allow to be stored any vehicles outside of the building which are not verifiable, registrable junk. I mean, we just, I just don't want to get into a case where you're saying, no one's paying attention and I happen to have three that came in and I'm, you know, and I can do this and this and they're sitting there. I mean, you know, that's, I mean, we're comfortable with the storage of the new vehicle, but if there's going to be anything else about parts, because everything you purported to us about parts, including the information you suggested represented income on your tax returns, is that it's almost infinitesimal. So I don't know why being confined to the building wouldn't be sufficient because it doesn't seem like you have five vehicles there very often.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
All right. So how does that affect the camper that's been there for six months?
I have to finish taking the wood out, but then I'll take it off the property.
Okay. But that's that vehicle. But then, under this decision, that couldn't recur. You couldn't have, because that camper's outside.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't do that again.
No, if, once, if I brought a car inside the building, and it would leave it inside the building, it's already to be removed. Is that okay?
Yeah.
That's what my class three license is.
Yeah. No, no, I, as long as we all understand that.
Is that okay?
Is it on the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that hyper technical point is the only one...
Okay. Do we want to address your point? Do we want to make one more additional amendment to this statement to say, instead of saying any vehicles, do we want to restrict it to motorized vehicles? Any vehicles, as you say, covers anything that moves on wheels technically, which means trailers. If we put, if we, if we say motorized vehicles, then, I mean, there's nothing that's dripping or going to come out of a camper or a trailer, you know, like I have by the side of my house. Do we want to restrict it or what do you think?
I think on the back of the class three license, it says motor vehicles. If I don't have a copy right there, it doesn't have a class three license. It's motor vehicles.
It's motor vehicles.
Is that a problem?
Yeah, I think motor vehicles is probably...
Okay.
Is a problem?
No.
Okay.
I think you have to change it. If I understand this right, you're saying motor vehicles. So you've got three bicycles out there for some reason.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody cares because they're not going to contaminate the groundwater or the ground or anything.
Right.
Or a trailer. But what they're concerned is, and I think we are in agreement, you can't have, you know, some junk car up there leaking antifreeze, you know, motor oil and a bunch of other stuff. It's only going to hurt any motor vehicles.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's your floor. You're okay?
That's all I wanted to say. I just, that...
Okay.
Yeah. You got to do it inside?
Yeah, inside.
That's all.
Is that okay?
Inside, yeah.
Yeah.
Good job, Tom.
The number five, we talked to the police chief, the fire chief, the whiskey's.
Yeah, I, I've left it to, you and he seem to have an agreement.
Okay, okay.
It's up to you.
We're there, right, okay.
Yeah.
As long as he's satisfied.
You're willing to agree to that.
Right. Yeah. No, that's funny.
Do you want to make as a condition in your discussion, right at the end of the discussion, next to the last paragraph, you talked about the signage, 25 miles an hour?
Yeah.
Maybe we should make that, bring that down into the conditions. It's not, it's referenced, but then it's not made a condition. I don't think it is.
No, you know, I think you're right.
That sign, I said I would put one there. The sign would be inside the property.
You see, it's in, yeah, it's inside the property.
What they're saying is...
I understand what you're saying.
Okay. They just want to make sure it's a condition. So if you violate it, they can bring you in and say, we don't have any discussion, this isn't a condition.
You know, it's, it's, it's inside. It's not for public consumption. It's only for those that are driving inside. It's like you and me putting, you know, a dog crossing on our property to get people to slow down. I mean, you know, people may or may not respond to it. It's not, if he, if we were asking him to put signage exterior to the property, I think I'd be more inclined to agree with you, frankly. I don't have a problem with making a condition because I know he indicates, it's, candidly, it's a carryover from the 87 decision.
I mean, the statement says he's agreed to it, so...
Yeah. I'll put a sign in this, you know, inside the property. So, you know, let them come back out, speed at 25 miles an hour. Respect the neighborhood, the children. When you see the signs on the street anyways like that. But I want it inside my property.
Yeah, no, no, no.
If I put it outside, someone will take it down.
Well, I don't want to, you know, there are so many issues with signage in town.
I know.
You know, it's, I don't want to go there.
Can I put private property sign on my gate?
I don't see why you can't.
Okay.
I don't think this decision can affect that.
No.
No, I just want to, you know, because a long time ago, like this, I went to the neighbors beforehand. I put signs out there. Private property, no hunting and all that stuff.
Yeah, well, that's...
And I went to the neighbors, I says, listen, I'm going to put them on my side, my property, all my trees. I put 10 of them there. Within a week they got ripped out. All of them. But I know that stuff, but I just wanted to sign. I just wanted to put a sign, private property, no trespassing.
There were no hunting signs?
Huh?
Were there no hunting signs that got ripped down?
Private property, I put everything up there, but not to do here, you know, just to protect myself.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's, I'm just saying, you know, if I put them there, I just want to put one on the fence. Private property, no trespassing, please take notice.
I have private property on my driveway because I sit 200 yards back and people go down, I'm thinking it's a road.
Okay.
So get away.
I don't like that.
You got anything else?
Okay, so the only change that we made is any motor vehicles.
Motor vehicles outside. Page 5.1. Any motor vehicles outside.
How is that going to, how is that going to affect the last page?
It shouldn't affect at all.
It won't.
It's too worse, no. It won't bounce it. She's got room here. If you want to make that, can we, should we, yeah, we can sign. What we're going to do is we'll sign and then she's going to make the direction to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay. She'll send you, she'll...
Okay, so, you've heard the decision, you've heard it, we discussed it. I'll put it through, though.
Okay.
Go forward.
Aye.
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 So your work and copies are sufficient now until she files it next week?
Okay, that's fine. That's perfect. No problem.
The only thing that I would suggest that you do is that once you have a, you know, we've got a copy that's there, that you let your lessees...
Oh, have a copy.
Have a copy.
What we came up with.
Just so they know that this is what you're forced to work under now.
I understand.
Just to keep them in the informative loop.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yeah.
You should really thank Mr. Cool because the only reason this is happening tonight is because he's here.
Thank you very much. But I should have been here. So I mean, it's not...
Yeah, but you are. You weren't and you are. So that's, that's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, what will happen now, we'll, we say we'll put this together on Monday. Soon she will finalize it on Monday, possibly file it on Tuesday. And then it's a 20-day period.
And after that, I've got 30 days to record.
Right.
I'll take care of that.
After 20 days, you go to the, to the...
Your town clerk.
Town, as town clerk, yeah.
Which is different.
Then you got that. And then you can just email that compromise. Once you get it, you can just email it to her.
Yes, we'll do.
That's fine.
We'll do.
Is there any other business?
Don't have any other business.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Make a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's conveyed to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all very much.